Board meeting. And uh. We will get started. So y'all be with me if we get, thank you.
At this time, let us pray. Dear Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to come before your throne of grace this afternoon. Thank you, Your Father God, for lighting up the screen. Thank you for making a way for us all. You praise Father God in this season of life in which we're in, that we will continue to cast our cares upon you. Realize that Father God, you care for us. We know, Father God, that we're in a pandemic. We know that things are happening. Where people are being diagnosed positive, some are having symptoms, some are being quarantined. Whatever they call it, Father God, just continue to be with us. And I pray that there's anything in our bodies that should not be there, we rebuke it now in the mighty name of Jesus. We pray for healing as we go forward. And Father God, we thank you for what's about to happen as our students come back. Face-to-face learning on Monday, some will continue to be virtual. Whatever their needs are, Father God, let our teachers and our educators, let us give them the best education and teaching methods that we know how. And we praise you now, Father God, for this in advance. And we ask for a continued leadership from our superintendent and our board members. And every certified and classified staff member, we're going to continue to give you our honor, glory, and praise. For we realize, Father God, that we can do nothing without you. And we have this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
All right, everyone, if you guys had a chance to look at the agenda. Oh. I have a chance to agenda, we can have a motion to adopt the agenda.
Tomo.
Mr. Jowers, second. We have a second. Mr. Preston, your mic's off, but I see him waving his hand there. Okay. We have a motion or a second. Get all in favor. Ah, yeah, sorry, I have a microphone. No problem. All right, Dr. Lees.
All right, at this time, we have two school updates. Last month, we were planning to have West Green present to the board. And we were not able to put that together. We had the virtual meeting and such as that. So we put that off until this month. And also, we have Indian Creek scheduled for this month. So we're gonna have both principals with us tonight. Of course, you can see them on the Google meets there. We have Mr. Alan Chancy from West Green, and we have Ms. Tamara Morgan from Indian Creek. We're glad to have with us tonight. And they have a presentation, and I'm gonna start with West Greens. And I'm gonna turn it over to you, Ms. Chancy, and I'm just gonna pull up your PowerPoint. You can kind of walk us through and tell us where we need to go to the next slide and so forth, okay?
All right, good evening. It's great to be with you guys tonight and just share just a few tidbits of West Green Elementary and what's going on out in West Greens area. And show a few things that are happening with us and what's going on. But Dr. Lees, you can go on there to the next slide. This year, I think, going in, we knew it was gonna be a much different year and a tough year. So we chose the theme of Team Warriors United. And we knew that more than ever, we're gonna have to work as a team and come side by side with each other and hold each other up and work together to face the unknowns and the different changes that have been made throughout this year. So we wanted to really focus on that of everybody working together, nobody being on an island by themselves. And each of us coming together to support the other in each and every way that we could. So probably just like, I know all across our county and all across the country, our teachers have come together, especially in the last three weeks, to really make a difference and to do what they can to achieve the learning that best we can through this at-home learning. On this slide, we've got enrollment. We're roughly, right now, that number changes daily. But about 314 is our total enrollment. We have 295 in person. Nineteen that are enrolled virtual, and currently, we have seven students that are choosing to continue the at-home model. And you can see there at the bottom, our makeup and diversity as far as student-wise goes. I'm gonna show just a few updates that were most recent updates to West Greens. There are the two pictures on the left. It's one of our main hallways that goes down our kindergarten pre-k hallway. I know for many years, it's been asked about possibly painting the bricks there. And so this past summer, that was able to be done. So it really brought that hallway a little bit more light and brought it into, to be matching with our other hallways. So you can see the difference there. Very proud of that. Very excited to have that to match the rest of the school. We've been very particular about that and very cautious. So we'll protect that and make sure that that's something that lasts for many years to come. So it's held up very well and did a very good job with that. There on the right, we're finally able to add, just a few months ago, the partition there in our front office. That's certainly a big help there. And at the very end, you can't see it, but there is also the door that is, that has a buzzer to buzz people in and out of the front office if needed. Definitely, you know, this time, that's something that adds another layer of protection for our staff up front of having that partition in place and protection for them. Here on the left, these are our two front doors on our front porch. The wider one on the right is what used to be the main entrance. The one on the left is now the smaller one that is our main entrance into the front office. Those two are very visible from our front parking. You can see all the way down that main hallway that was in the previous picture. And so just kind of thinking about safety and things like that of someone being able to pull up in our parking lot and see directly all the way down our main hallway and see all of our students there. We kind of wanted to add just a little bit of a label there. So from the outside, you can see those graphics that welcome our parents and our visitors and give some instruction. And the one there in the middle displays our warrior way and our core essentials, character education. And on the inside, it just appears to be just a slide 10. So it's not completely blocked as far as view, but it does limit that and hinders that for someone that may have ill intent of coming and being able to look down and see some things through our hallways. There on the right, that picture. For years, our boys, that very last door on the left there, inside that door is our boys' bathroom. And that's been on the outside of that door for many years. Just past that bulletin board is where those doors lay before. You can kind of see maybe where the tile is different on the bottom of the floor. That's where that door lays. So our boys' bathroom was on the outside. So this time of year was not very pleasurable to be in there using that restroom and washing their hands. Very cold. So we're very appreciative of that. Just a simple update, those father's doors down just a few feet bring those guys inside to be able to use that restroom. So we're appreciative of that. Here, this is in that same hallway, we just added some graphics to our windows, to our computer lab to highlight our character education program that we've adopted, Core Essentials. And they have their big three that we focus on throughout the entire year, making smart decisions, treating others right, and making or maximizing our potential. So that's something that we cover with our students lately, and we encourage from them each and every day. Not only is there an elementary student or as they're here at West Green Elementary, but throughout their entire life and after they leave us, we want to carry on that character with them. These are the core essentials that we focus on this year. They change from year to year. Currently, in January, we're on the word responsibility. And so we highlight each month has a word and it has a graphic that goes with it. I won't get behind the stories for each one, but each one, as far as the the thing that you see in the each picture, has a purpose and a reason why it's there that we discuss that with our students for that character education. I think the next slide is a video from Core Essentials, our students see our daily announcements. We have pieces there for students. We have videos for our parents and things that can connect. So parents are able to use some character education at home. The thing is a three-minute video, if you can get that to play, just kind of get a taste of what the message is for our students through these videos.
It sounds like it's, I'm excited to be back. I'll bet you're wondering what's in this. Yeah, it's like, I don't know. Dropped up pretty well. Looks like we must have.
Yeah, looks like we may have lost the audio on that. All right, it's fine. We don't have to watch through it, but that's something, Sam, it's the same character that our students see each and every day, each and every month. And he brings a message to them of, for each character word that we're focusing on and how they can say it, how they can know it, and how they can be that word in each area of their lives. So our students are really excited to see those videos. There's four each month, and they really enjoy those. And when they don't get to see them, they ask about them. And that's something, we initially weren't continuing our announcements the first week of this at-home learning, and that's what several of our students have asked about. You know, we're gonna get to watch our videos. So we added that back to our beginning of each day for the videos. And that's something that our students look forward to and see in that. So it's a very good piece and a very essential piece that we think not only have educated them with our Jordan standards of excellence, but also with being a good citizen. I think you're muted, Dr. Lees.
All right, we may have ran into some technical problems with the presentation. Did you finish it up?
You go on to the, to the next slide. We don't have to watch that video.
All right, let me pull, I'm gonna share my screen again. Let me go back into the work session and try to get that up. Bear with me.
Dr. Lees, I have the ability to present. I've got it on my computer if I need to share.
Um, I'm pulling it up right now. Let's see how this works. Are you seeing that?
No, sir.
All right, let me go back into the meeting. And uh. I'm going to share, I'm gonna go into Google, just want to hit hit our screen.
I just, you can just go to that slide, post video. You go on a couple more, I think.
Moving slide.
Just after this. This picture, we recognize our students each month for the character word that's been exhibited. Teachers are choosing those for their home rooms. That's our tribe kids. We recognize them. They get a certificate and a t-shirt recognizing them for being good stewards of the character word for that month. Go to the next slide. We try to continue with our staff and student recognition. We're building our culture and our celebrating our people. So recognizing our staff and faculty's birthdays, also different things we do throughout the year to recognize staff. They earn gift cards and different things like that, trying to have some fun and to build that positive climate. The two pictures there in the middle, we have with PBIS, positive office referral. One of the first times that I ever called a student to the office was for a positive, but they didn't know. And they were crying and trembling and just highly upset. Like, I figured right then, this was probably, I guess now, five years ago. But we had, we had to do something a little bit different about the thought and the outlook of coming to the office. So not long after that, we began positive office referral, recognizing students for doing the positive things and not only coming to the office discipline, but coming to be recognized for the great things they're doing within their class and exhibiting great character. So our teachers do that. They write a referral just like they would for discipline, and they send that to the office. We call the students over the intercom just like we would in the normal time, and they come up and we celebrate them and give them some awesome feedback on what they're doing. And then we take their picture, put that on Facebook, and the parents level, seeing them being recognized that way. At the bottom right, we've got a board for our staff to recognize great things from each other and lifting up each other for each thing they do throughout the week. Go to the next slide. We just had different community helpers come out this year and share with our students, the Sheriff Department, Fire Department, Fire Safety Week, and regular weeks. People like this and share information with them. Continue on. Here in one of our main hallways, we try to bring the awareness of college and career for our students. On the board that are left, there are different names of colleges we're going to be aware of, and brought to their attention on the right. We try to highlight a career and theme and theme area for our students to be exposed and know what attributes they have as far as years ago, and our counselor takes care of that and discusses different opportunities for our students for them to be aware of what may be next as they move on in life. This is something that our media specialist, Ms. Deidre Taft, focuses along with our robotics. This is students from last year who really kind of got this going. She does a great job there in our media center of exposing our kids to lots and lots of different stuff about technology and robotics and different pieces. And we had joined the Wonder League Robotics Competition last year. These students here have began practicing and focusing on coding and robotics. They were getting prepared in February, March for an upcoming competition. And obviously, we had our school shut down, so they didn't get to participate in that. We haven't fully got that back up and running for this year, but they are continuing to be exposed to the robotics and the opportunities with that. We hope to soon be able to, anyone who's wondering, offer the Lego. Different leg, slide. There should be more pictures of those students. They signed up for this as an extracurricular last year and came out to school and spent time learning the different layouts and the different pieces they need to do to prepare for the competition that was upcoming. Go to the next slide. And then this is our students this year. The picture or the slide before that was them working in our computer lab at a reduced model with our fifth graders and fourth graders being exposed to 3D design, 3D printing. So with a 3D printer, those students are able to design themselves on that program different pieces and different things that can be sent to our 3D printer. On the next page, we've had some of those printed up, new staff printed some of those up for our board members. So you guys, next time that you're by the board, be able to pick those up. So that's something that our students are learning. And, you know, as we move forward in life and careers, obviously, a lot of that heavy in the technology area. So we want our students to be exposed to that and have the opportunities to know that they can use their talents in that area to make a career. So this is just continue to work on that, the students working in coding and learning how that works. And this is something that they really, really, really get very interested in. It's very tough and very detailed. They don't realize just how much they're doing, how much they're working when they're having fun with this. We had just a few years ago, the opportunity to jump in with the Growing Readers Initiative through Arisa. And they've come in, and we've done this, I think this is our, you know, our third or fourth year, I can't remember exactly. But this is like eight or two students have been able to improve their reading levels and Lexile. And hopefully, by the time that they get to third grade, they're where they need to be on their reading level. We've seen great gains and growth there. This is just a Lexile team challenge. The students meet their grade level Lexile, we put a basketball up. And our fifth grade students that accepted the challenge, power challenge to read thirty books by the end of the school year. And this is on Career Day. We've got a little Miss Aubrey there in kindergarten. She dressed up. She wants to be a teacher when she grows up. But she had the opportunity that day to actually teach her classroom. But we talk about Miss Clayton growing her own. Hopefully, in the future, we'll get to see Miss Aubrey a few feet taller in one of our classrooms. And then here, this is what we focus on, the warrior way each and every day with being safe, respectful, and responsible. And this year, we wanted to add in with our mission with our school to also be a graduate. So this is some of our students here, each and every day, be safe, respectful, responsible, and be a graduate. The Kappa Phi Kandy School System wants that. That's just a few things of West Green. We appreciate your time and any opportunity to come and share some of that with you.
Great job. All right. Any questions, board members?
Impressive, impressive. Thank you, thank you, students. We appreciate it.
We will. Thank you. And your parents. Yes.
All right, at this time, we're going to move on with the presentation from Indian Creek. And if you'll be patient for one moment, I'm going to have to pull up another screen and then share that. So bear with me for a second. And I'm going to refer back to my directions on what I need to do and then try to pull that up.
As you're doing that, Dr. Lees, hello, everybody. Thank you, board members and Dr. Lees, for allowing us to present. And we have a little bit of Bon Jovi for you. His song, "When We Can't Do What We Do, We Do What We Can." So in this first part of the slideshow that you'll see is going to be a video. And it's us, our staff at Indian Creek, helping keep our Cardinals safe as we provide love and learning. So I hope you enjoy that. And then we'll follow it with a slideshow to where we are taking field trips, virtual field trips, of course. We are having music that lifts our spirits and holidays and always learning with fun, and we're celebrating each other. So we hope that you'll enjoy this and see a little bit of what we do here at Indian Creek.
Although I keep my social distance, but this world means it's a home. And do it by the passion, and it's no joke to try to be loved. So love yourself and love your family, love your neighbor and your friend. Be the type of love to strangers, just a friend you ain't made yet. I'm ready, I want to do. I can't resist my feelings, I don't want it to sink. Round you we bend, you know, down in the bottom of the stain. Good to see what you do, good to see you. Good to see what you do. Good to see you.
Don't have to post that again. Don't you know, you can't miss that Bon Jovi song. You're so celebrating. Now we talk to her and brother coordination and tell your words. And our head, there's a door, feeling. Maybe it's way. Okay, go baby. Good friend. And we are, right now, we want to experience. Oh, thank you, Lord. And we're celebrating our holidays. And we're having fun in the morning. We're celebrating each other. Our exercise and staying healthy. And this is one of our faithful subs that starts call. And she's exercising with the children in T D M. She's awesome. And I don't know who this person is. They caught me, caught your heart. That's the theme of Ghostbusters there, we're doing a ghost noodle. We can make it through this together. We are good together. We are free and we are happy and we are strong together. Hope y'all enjoyed that. I'm sorry about the music, though. I mean, I hate that, but.
It doesn't really feel when I go in, just if I go in Assembly, it'll be attached. This Morgan, you know, both of yours and Chancy's played really well on the
Oh, okay.
silver side. So I think it's gonna go in, it's going from platform to platform.
Okay, good, good.
Great job. I really, you can sing before, but I didn't know you could dance too.
Oh, Lord, that's amazing.
All right, are there any questions for either principal? All right, if there's no question, then we will move on with the meeting. And I'm going to go back to presenting the screen. And I'm going to attempt to present. It looks like Mr. Wade has joined us. Welcome, Mr. Wade. And you're muted right now, but you are on. So I will, I'm going to present the agenda now as we get back on the board agenda. All right, y'all should be able to see the agenda. At this time, we have the minutes from our December meetings. Board members, those were on Assembly, and I'm going to pull them up on the screen real quick. You want to take a moment to look over those. And we have the minutes from our call meeting. We did training. This is G S B A Annual Conference and Workshop. We had the board members here to receive training. So that's the minutes from that meeting. And then we have the work session on December 10th. Then we have the December 10th regular meeting. And these minutes are also found on Assembly, board members, if you're in that, if you can look at them. If there's no objection, board members, we'll place those minutes on the monthly meeting following this meeting to be approved on the consent agenda. Financial reports. You'll see the financial reports here. We have Ms. Yawn, who is with us, and she is going to give us a summary of these reports. I will click on the documents and work through these reports. I'm going to click on the first document. Ms. Yawn, you want to give a description of this?
Yes, sir. The first report, we see this is our financials as of December 31, 2020. And you can see that we have the beginning fund equity as of July 1 of $19,349,718.10. The revenue as of December 31, 2020 is at $26,388,641.80. And a point to mention on the revenue, the last tax revenue check for December was posted in the month of December, on December 4. The check was not processed in time for us to have it deposited in the month of December. So that will be reflected in January's financials. In the total expenditures are at $25,091,960.54 for a fund equity of $20,646,399.36 on that report. The next report that you're seeing here is the comparison report of the past or the four years here of the fund equity. And you can see the December amounts of the fund equity at $20,646,399.36. And again, if you compare it to last year, you can see that it's down. But this is a reflection of that check being posted in January and not the month of December. Any questions with that one?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Yawn, do you know what that amount is?
Yes, it's a, the actual amount is $3,752,224. The report here is our comparison report as of December 31, 2020. The first portion is the revenues broken down by the different categories. The second page at the bottom reflects the total revenues. Again, you can see at $26,388,641.80. The next part is the expenditures broken down by the different functions of the school system for a total expenditure through the month of December at $25,091,960.54. And then on the last page shows our fund equity as of December at $20,646,399.36. Any questions there? The last report here is the SLOSS five report.
Looks like.
I don't know either. I don't. This is as of December 31, the revenue that was received for December was $551,323.36. I'm not sure why it's showing up because it looked, I can see it on the other. It looks like there's a smaller portion over here that's showing. There you go.
It is.
Any questions on the SLOSS? We also wanted to mention that we were notified by the Department of Education, the CARES Act II allocation. And we were allocated, we were allocated to receive $11,124,491. These funds can be used over a two-year period and with a deadline of September 2023. So we, you know, we just were notified at the beginning of the year. So as we know, learn more about this, we'll be relaying this information to you.
We do have to keep in mind, though, that we had the austerity this past year, pretty significant austerity. They are going to return 60% of that austerity this year to us, but we will have to fill that gap of 40% of our austerity this year. And they're only going to return 60% of the austerity next year. So we'll still have a gap of 40% austerity next year. So there's still pretty significant state GBE funding that will be withheld that we'll have to use this, this CARES Act II funding to help fill that, that gap. But it is good news. It is good news. That's gonna, that's gonna help us. So. Any questions about the financial reports? We will place the financial reports on the regular monthly meeting for approval. E-Rate update. This document was presented by Dr. Newell. He had surgery last week, and he's out with his surgery. And y'all say a prayer for Dr. Newell as he recovers from that. He's doing well, but he can't, he doesn't have his voice right now. So he's, was not going to present tonight. But this is a summary of what we've done so far with the E-Rate funding. If you recall, FY21 E-Rate funding is going to be a continuation. It's phase two of the work that we started last year. And it's to put in network switches. And that's what you see right there in that picture. And the FY20 E-Rate network infrastructure upgrade, this is the work we did last year. Phase one FY20 was $630,705 for network switches. And we used E-Rate funding, that's federal funding, $536,099 was E-Rate. And our contribution through EastLOSS was $94,606. So that was the work we did last year on the switch upgrades. And Dr. Newell has put out for proposal, phase two. That's this phase two that's out for proposal. And that will be coming to you all next month when he, when those proposals are returned. And he has prices to, to put in front of the board. The phase two, he is estimating will be $468,156. And he will use $397,933 of E-Rate funding, federal funds. And we will have to use $70,223 of local EastLOSS funds. But in talking with one of our other technology staff earlier today, I told him that piece of equipment there, it looks quite simple, looks pretty, even almost antiquated looking. And he said, no, that is a very high-tech piece of equipment. That is one of the top-of-the-line type switches that you can get. So our network is held up really well. And according to Dr. Newell, this will just continue to give us a really strong network for the future. So this was really just to present this this month because, as I've said earlier, you see in the graphic right there, the proposal is out. The RFP for the project was posted on January 12. Proposals are due February 11. So we wanted to get this in front of you this month so that when we come back next month, you'll be aware of what's coming to the board. Are there any questions?
Explain E-Rate for the public.
E-Rate is funding that is set aside by the federal government to be used on infrastructure, communications, and technology. So we, very limited uses of E-Rate funding. It revolves around technology, infrastructure, and communication. So the projects have to be E-Rate approved. And the federal government's very strict about what they will approve for E-Rate funding to go towards. And it goes towards things like your, your infrastructure for your technology, switches, network, wireless networks, things of that nature. So the federal government makes that funding available for institutions such as school districts to be able to access. But you have to have money to also go with it. So we're glad to have EastLOSS funding that we can use to, to leverage the available E-Rate funding. I've got to give Dr. Newell credit. He does a great job of managing E-Rate for us, making sure that we're taking advantage of all the E-Rate funded that we're eligible for. So it's a, it's a federal program that, that our technology department has done a great job of accessing.
And that's what I'm getting at. We're, we're using this money. They're, they're basically giving us 85% of the cost, and we're only having to add 15%. So, so we're getting a lot of technology, a lot of, a lot of things done around the Coffin County School System, and not having to pay the 15% of that cost by using this E-Rate program.
Yes, sir. That's the E-Rate portion. And I wanted to present that to you all tonight as information so that you will have that next month when we come back to the board. And are there any questions about that? All right. The next item is the policies. We have the board policy that was presented back in October. This is the graduation policy. We brought this to the board with some updates that needed to be inserted into this policy due to special services and the special education program and some changes that are occurring at the state level. And the State Department of Education is going to create a diploma track for students with special needs. And so we wanted to make sure that our local graduation policy reflected those changes. And so Dr. Tanya Johnson, our Special Education Director, and along with our Special Services Director, Dr. Dana Ventress, have vetted this policy. And they have made and recommended the changes that you find that deal with special ed and special services to ensure that we're in compliance with the new changes for the graduation rule. We also sent this policy to Georgia School Board Association and had their policy person, Marveen, review this for accuracy and make sure that it met their standards also. So we feel good about presenting this to the board tonight for approval. We'd had some discussion about semesters towards graduation and such as that. We've taken that language out. And at this point, this is what we're asking the board to approve. And it only contains the changes that deal with special ed program. We did update, like, one place where it had 2010, very beginning, it had students who enter, it was some old verbiage from 2010 to 2011. We updated that to say 2020, 2021. This mostly just pertains to special ed? It does. All of this change that we're doing tonight, that's all, all it pertains to. We had some discussion about some other areas of it, but we're not, I'm not moving forward with any of that. We'll just address the special needs of each other. So we will ask the board to approve that tonight. Then we also have the Board Code of Ethics. Each year, the Board of Education is required to review policy PH, which is the Board Code of Ethics. So I'm presenting that to the board tonight at the board meeting. And at your leisure, board members, you can review that policy. And if you want to spend some time with it, you can certainly do that at your leisure. And we will present this, this policy tonight, the Board Code of Ethics tonight, and also the board member conflict of interest policy with PHA, we will present tonight. And once again, if you want to review that on your own, go over those policies, certainly do that. But I'm officially presenting them tonight for review. And we'll come back next month and have a document for you to sign affirming that you have reviewed these policies. Are there any questions about that? All right. The next item on the agenda is the Brockton Mary Hay School Zone Radar System. The mayor of Brockston reached out to us several months ago. Ms. Dawn Tooten, who's the new mayor of Brockston, and Dr. Banks and myself went up and met Mayor Tooten and her chief of police and a representative from Red Speed USA. And they proposed to us that they install this Red Speed USA system. And it is a system in which the city of Brockston will have flashers that they will maintain through Red Speed USA, the flashing lights up in Brockston, the school zone lights. They will also install some cameras and, and tag readers. So if somebody speeds through the school zone, they will be given a ticket from the city of, of Brockston. And the city of Brockston, city police chief is in favor of this, as well as other officers on her force. She cited that she has a very well-respected former state patrolman who's on their staff up there, who really feels like this would be a good move for their, their law enforcement up there. She feels like it will be a good move for them. And so this would involve us, and the fact that by agreeing to do this or allow them to do this, we have to sign off that we will allow Red Speed USA to take ownership of the flashing light system up there. That's what this next document is. I will have to sign this. And basically, this gives up the ownership of the flashing lights from DOT to Red Speed USA. And then Red Speed USA is required with the upkeep and maintenance of those flashing lights. So that's why I want to make sure that the board understood this piece before we agree to move forward with this with the city of Brockston, a desire to do this. So just wanted to make sure. I was, I was concerned about that piece because my understanding is once DOT gives up those flashing lights, they're not coming back and putting in flashing lights again. It'll be up to Red Speed USA to maintain those lights, maintain that system. And they, they pledged that they will do that. And the company says that they are doing that currently in other communities. They are a growing company, and they will be around to do that. So that was the big concern with, with allowing this to, to occur, is the fact that DOT will drop those lights. But the mayor feels strong about it. Their police force up there feels good about it. Chris Elrod attended the meeting with us, with myself and Dr. Banks. He felt positive about it. And so, board, I wanted to bring it to you all again. I talked with the mayor the other day. She called me earlier this week, and we spoke about it. And I told her that, that I would come back to our board to see if y'all were okay with Brockston moving forward with this. So.
I spoke with Ms. Sam, I guess it's been a few months ago, when the guy came to the meeting and presented this. And I had her run it by the governing council. I had the people on the governing council run it by their parents and people involved in the school system. And basically, the feedback we got was kind of fifty-fifty, you know, half of them said, yeah, we need to do that, half of them like eh. So I guess where I'm at with this is that it's not easy to be kind of tit-for-tat what people think about it. But if the mayor and the police chief and, and everybody else won't install it, you know, I'm not going to stand in their way.
Any other board members have any thoughts on it? Dr. Lee?
Yes, sir.
You saying the, uh, the flashing lights, once we sign these over to them, they belong to them?
Yes, sir.
And then if they have to be replaced?
Red Speed USA will replace them.
What if they're not around?
Well, that was my concern with them, that, you know, if we give up those lights and they're not around, we won't have flashlights.
They got any kind of bond to anything?
I'm not sure about the bond in that regard, but, uh, I can look into it some more. Find out. There's some counties around us that have installed their equipment.
I think we need to have something that would, uh, kind of guarantee that they replace them if something happened or if they went to leave, that they would have, we'd have some money in escrow somewhere to take care of it.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
I mean, is this, is this pushing to get this done tonight?
No, sir. We can, we can do some more investigating and make sure we feel good about it before we move forward.
Maybe be willing to put some money somewhere just to see it, you know, in escrow kind of case they cut out still.
Yes, sir. I actually want to say that's a good idea because that was my concern with the whole thing was, you know, once you get it, it's gone, you know?
What would it cause? What, can we talk to DOT and find out what it would cost to replace them if we had to go back and put them up later?
Yeah.
Didn't they give us an estimate of what it would cost?
I mean, I don't mind them doing it, but I, I, I left house, I guarantee that we're not going to be left home in the back having to buy new ones. I don't know what the cost would be.
Yeah. I'll look into it. We'll get more information. Uh, that, that's why I've not moved real fast with this because I want, if we do this, we want to know it's, it's a good, good decision on our part because we're the ones that are giving up some, you know? So we'll do some more looking at it and see, come back to the board with some more details. We need to have a retreat sometime probably in February. So maybe I can have some more information in the discussion, the work session or else maybe in a retreat setting. Have more information. All right? All right. The, that's all we have on the agenda. We will, uh, move forward for the next item, which is the selection of 2021 board of education officers.
Dr. Lee, so I would, uh, I'd like to make a motion that my vice chairman, Mr. Jesse Jowers, assumes the responsibilities of chairman for 2021 school year.
I'll second that. In discussion. Oh, we got a motion, I'll second. All in favor? I'm having to look around the screens for everybody. Say if you can, I can't, I'm trying to look to see if I see everybody. All opposed? All right, Mr. Chairman. All right, congratulations, Mr. Chairman.
If I may, I'd like to recommend that Mr. Brian Preston be appointed vice chairman for the 2021 year.
I'd second that.
Any comments? All in favor? All opposed? Okay.
All right. Well, congratulations. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right, going back to the agenda. We have an executive session scheduled and, uh, I would ask the board that we move to an executive session to discuss personnel and also have a real estate issue I wanted to bring to the board, but, uh, personnel and the hiring or employment of personnel. So, uh, all of our, uh, staff that are on the call, if y'all will please exit the call at this time and Logan, if you will exit the call and we will be in executive session, which will be, uh, for board members only. We need a motion to do that?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, we exit the executive session.
But we enter executive session.
Enter executive session, I'm sorry. I'm ahead of, thanks.
Need a second. Mr. Preston. All in favor? Uh-huh. Okay. Doing the executive session, just down.
The, I've got the agenda back up, so you go ahead, exit executive session, Mr. Jones. We, we need a motion to make executive session.
Please, yes.
Second. All in favor? All right. The board decision is adjourned. All right. And now we will, it's time to open up our regular monthly meeting of the Coffey County School System. And, uh, this is the regular monthly meeting. If we want to go ahead and stand for the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Uh, we'll call the, uh, January 28th, 2001 Board of Education Regular Meeting to order at this time. Uh, last, Dr. Lee, you want to give implication?
Yes, sir, I so will. Lord, we just thank you for this opportunity to be here and do the business of the Coffey County School System. And, uh, we're just thankful for grace, Lord. We're just thankful for, for all the blessings that you've given us. And we ask that you be with those families who are dealing with loss and be with those families who are dealing with pain and, and the suffering that's going on out there in the world right now. And Lord, we just, uh, ask that you be with, with those in need. And just God direct us as we go through this meeting tonight in Jesus' name we pray. Amen. Okay, do we need to amend the agenda just now? Uh, yes, sir. We will add, uh, to the, underneath, uh, personnel recommendations, we will add 11, which will be the school nursing agreement between Coffey Regional Health Physician Practices and Coffey County School District. Have a motion?
Sure, sir.
Mr. Wade, you second?
I'll second. I'll second.
Preston, second. All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
We're putting that in as number?
11 and we'll move, uh, adjournment to 12 and comments to 13. Okay, Dr. Lee? All right, we have the, uh, leadership capacity Coffey County Schools, mission and vision, or mission is destination graduation for college career and life. And our vision is to create a stronger community, do an equitable and excellent education for every student. Under governance and leadership, we have special recognitions. And I do, I'm holding the, the 2020 Georgia School Board Association, uh, exemplary board trophy here in my hands. So board members, congratulations. Uh, they didn't have the conference this year, so you weren't able to get the trophy in person, but you got it here at the board office. We'll be displaying this out in the commentary. When people come in, they can see that you are indeed an exemplary school board. So thank you for all your work towards getting that. Under resource capacity, we have the consent agenda. And on the consent agenda, we have our minutes from the December meeting. We also have our financial report that were reviewed in the work session prior to this meeting. And, uh, we reviewed those in the, in the work session and discussed the financials for the month of December. We also have, have a policy revision for the graduation requirements. And the graduation requirements are being amended to reflect special ed, education changes at the state level that we will update in our local graduation policy. And we discussed those at the work session prior to this. I have no need for an executive session, so, but I would ask for approval of the consent agenda. Need a motion?
Make a motion and we approve the consent agenda that's presented.
Mr. Lot, second?
I'll second.
Mr. Wade, second? All in favor?
All right. And personnel recommendations as presented? Do you have a motion?
I'll move, we, uh, personnel recommendations as presented.
Second.
Mr. Preston with the motion, Mr. Lot with second? All in favor?
And the next item is the agreement between CRH physician Practices and Coffey County School District School Nursing Agreement.
We need a second, guys.
I'm sorry, I seconded, I didn't realize that much.
Mr. Preston with the motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
All right. That's all. Thank you, board members. Yes, sir, that's all. And, uh, meeting is adjourned. Any board members have a comment?
I do, Mr. Jowers.
Okay.
Just like to say, I appreciate everyone's service to the school system on, on the board here this past year. Um, also want to send out, uh, you know, our, our prayers, uh, Ms. Grady, her family. Uh, Ms. Grady was at Eastside for many, many years, the fair pro. Hate that, uh, we've lost her to this, uh, hate, call it a plague, but this plague is going across our, our nation, our world. And to the family of Ms. Marilyn Torres, my condolences on that news as well. And then frankly, our families, our, uh, my, my families, uh, suffer from it. I know a lot of folks' families have as well. We've lost family, we've lost family, we've lost acquaintances. Um, I'm looking forward to vaccine rolling out. Hope that we can get our staff and our, our teachers, uh, somewhere along the line that they're, they're into that. I've realized, um, capacity is a huge issue, that we just may not, may not have the capacity to get everything done as quickly as we want to get it done. Um, I know the governor's pushing, um, you know, I'm, I'm also president-elect on GSBA. Uh, we just had a meeting this week with our executive director, Valerie Wilson. It's recovering from COVID. She's had a tough time of it. Um, our current president, Pat Hugely Green, uh, she's up in Columbus, Georgia. Uh, she's gone through it. Um, there's an hospital bed in Columbus, Georgia. Her husband had lapse lung due to a current medical condition. Had to get treated for that and sent home to the recovery. They had no hospital bed in Columbus. I know, I know our numbers are, are reducing here in Coffey based on the graphs, but, but people aren't grass. Just ask for everybody to continue to do their part. I know we're going to return to school here shortly. Uh, please mask up, sanitize your hands, help one another, stay in school. That's a, that's a big thing. We all, we can all help each other, uh, to do that. I think once we get back in school, we've seen that the spread slows down, slowed down in the summertime. It's better when we ride school. And if we can figure out a way to keep our schools open, we need all, all the work to that happen. Appreciate you all doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Preston. Uh, would say in-person school Monday morning. It's coming Monday morning. And I would like to say, uh, thank you to Mr. Lot for his services chairman last year. I know it was a tough year, but I think you did a good job. I appreciate that.
All right, thank you. And I think y'all covered the return to school, uh, back to face to face and certainly to the Torres family, to the Grady family, their loss. We send our thoughts and prayers and, and let's just continue to, to mask up and, and do the things that we know we can do to control the spread and thank y'all for what you do. Appreciate y'all.
And my condolences, my condolences are to the, the two families that are in bereavement tonight. I pray, uh, that God send them strength that surpasses all of their understanding. And I also pray that we come together in a unity to make decisions for the best of our school system, not to make the decisions for the best of our circle. We need to make the decisions the best of our school system. You know, uh, it's enough is enough of this, you know, separation, you know, this, this, this privilege. You know, we all God's children and we should all be treated as God's children. It's no little, you know, I, no big you. We need to stand together. If we say we gonna, we gonna do something, we need to stand together in on it, not just, you know, box somebody out because we can. Let's stand together as a unity because we all, like I said, are God's children and we all are gonna have to, you know, at judgment day, we gonna all have to be judged according to what we've done. So I just want to say that because there's something that I just see that's gonna continue on, you know, this privilege and not doing things fairly and just boxing off just because we can. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Dr. Lee?
Yes, sir.
Y'all want to try to confuse about a work session?
Yes, sir.
Can we incorporate the training in here to pick up some hours or do we need to do that?
We can, yes, sir. If y'all want to try to do a retreat, uh, like we've done before, a full.
Yeah, let's do that.
Uh, because it's February and typically we tried to do a retreat in February and, uh, we can look at a weekday. I know our board meeting for February is scheduled for that 25th, so maybe, uh, that week before, that might give us a chance to, we were going to start meeting with principals and looking at some preliminary budget type information. So if we, if that gives us, uh, a couple of weeks, I don't know how much that we'll have done, but maybe we'll have, uh, some more information from the state about monies and such, but, you know, we can, we can look at that week before, 16, 17, 18, 19. Would a weekday work good for y'all?
Whatever they, whatever will work for everybody. I mean, I'm good. Whatever, uh, I guess you need to check Mr. Preston and, and Ms. Wilkerson, not me.
We'll get together, look at it, see what we can figure out. All right. Uh, thank y'all. Take care. Bye-bye.